Yeah, I got two minutes.
That's my job.
Okay.
So the ambulance will be twenty-two just for reference.
I'm going to use. We should have the other.
My now.
Something more.
It's going to be a seven.
I've got my hand down that.
Oh, I got. Very good. You don't have so much.
So I'm like, no.
Yeah, I got, well, Lane's got to do it all today.
Yeah, sure. What's happening?
I used to, I can't do it anymore. There's no.
I can't hear.
If you're doing short end.
No. I was never very good at. That drove me nuts. This is not.
Yes, you did.
Yes, he did.
And we have our baby.
Then when I was in there because you're.
Hey, Tom. I'm getting eight center first. Seven?
I got seven. You got one? Cause I've got two.
Now I got one. I was just basically.
You got it right.
I've got two copies.
Okay, I got six. Okay, I'm going to reconvene the county council meeting for August twenty-six P M for budget hearings. Uh, before we start budget hearings, anyone have any public comment you want to make before we start our hearings?
How many people on this?
No, I just two.
No, we have one, two, three, four, five, six on for uh. Budget hearings tonight. No. Coroner, highway, ambulance, um, health department. Yeah, so. Being an animal, okay. Okay, so we may only have four tonight. Okay, alright. Okay, so not hearing any public comment, we'll start with Josh with coroner's office.
Any question?
That's page seven.
We can honestly say I have the easiest budget here, so. Um, the only thing I changed, I decreased the out of county. I don't wanna, I don't wanna like take it completely away. We haven't, this is knock on wood, maybe the second year where I'm gonna touch it, but I don't wanna make it go away in case we do, and they need it, they're all insured, so yeah, um.
Is that because they're not billing you money? That's an issue.
Yeah, they're. I don't know that, that we're not getting a bill, but I don't know if you answered.
Okay.
So now, you're not, so from the surrounding counties or a specific county?
It was a specific county initially, a specific county stuck us out.
Because they, because we kind of got surprised, was it last year?
Year four, yeah, just at point model blue for dying greens. Um, I spoke with Montgomery County coroner.
Okay.
He has never sent us a bill, he says he doesn't intend to.
Okay.
I have not spoken to the in county coroner. Okay, but I'm guessing they're kind of gonna stick with their tradition here. So I don't think they're gonna do, they're getting the pressure that they got, meant to be new county governor.
If you do an autopsy for someone out of county, you would send them.
Because we can only, we can only bill other counties in Indiana.
Right.
And our decedents have been out of state.
I understand.
A lot of our stuff, a lot of our out of county stuff is people instead of travelers on set hack or reporting. And then if there's, we've had a couple out on the other side of Indy, but it's just like.
You have, right, okay.
I have a question, Josh, on the base round, how many years do we have left on that?
Uh, I wanna say this at next.
Ten more minutes.
Yeah. For sure, I don't know, um, I don't know, when they signed in twenty.
Twenty.
The lane twenty. Or they sent a lane twenty-one on the lease of the van.
Um.
I don't remember.
No, it was like twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two, okay, twenty-two and twenty-three and twenty-four for the year, so I was.
So it's so. Oh, yeah, would be five there at least, yeah.
Okay, so then we need to, that we can twenty-five give to the budgets for that, we need to think about buyout.
Yeah.
In he and rotation.
I think we're, I think we're on the same date as the pickups.
Right, right. Right, yeah.
Ours is, ours is strictly five.
Five.
But my, my kind of thought is it's already got. We spent the extra eighteen hundred dollars for the, the seam lighting, it's got the rack with the equipment in it, it's got the cots.
You may want to buy it now.
Buy it, see if we can just buy it out.
Keep it.
Yeah, cause it's. It's silly to trade it out and spend more money on top of again, and it's not what I would have chosen, but it has worked out much better than what I would have chosen.
Is there an opportunity to buy out now if you wanted to?
Uh, we could talk to the rep, although I have not had a great amount of success with the rep. Um, but I'm sure some of us can reach out and, and just get, yeah, I think it would be easier, faster when we get closer, I could do better. But I'll, like I said the last time I tried to put the rep, it wasn't very successful.
He was supposed to come back in each year and talk about lease on all the vehicles.
Yeah. You see a lot.
I've seen, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you happen to know what the interest rate is on that lease?
No idea.
I mean, if it's cheap.
Yeah. That's a call me question.
Done in twenty-one, twenty-two, we shouldn't be very hot.
I mean, they have so.
So.
That would better off just. Yeah, right, I know.
Yeah. I'll see if I can find some information out.
Yeah, I know, obviously, oh, no idea.
I have some. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
If I can't, I'll just tell me.
Okay, and then let me know, like I said, the, the contact information that I got may not have been very solid. It came from the other, the other body. So, and I don't know how all that information was.
We've changed.
Yeah, and they find something a little bit more to their liking, a little bit more money. Um, the only thing, of course, the company to be used is called N M S for toxicology. And after, of course, I submitted their budget, they told me they raised their prices. It's not drastic, it's five percent this year and it'll be five percent next year, because they run. July to July, whereas, you know, we're running July, if it's under January to December, it's only five percent, I think we're still gonna be well within. As long as the state doesn't, doesn't keep adding new tests. So that might be the only thing about it.
Well, it's nice to see your budget for twenty twenty-five is less than your budget for twenty twenty-four, so.
I go over.
Yeah. But gold star, net yard, cool.
Okay, I'll leave that there. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Hey, that's sent, you ready? Yeah.
There's the.
Yeah. I'll give you guys a packet, um, kind of going over what our increases on it, that we back going and why. Then break down some of the, the items that you're asking. I'm wondering, love to start out.
Let's just, um, start. Page thirty-eight, Cambridge. If I went back. Yeah, like, ask a million dollar increase for next.
Oh, you're thinking about using that nice white stone.
I am. Especially on the, uh. The higher populated, more traveled road, which still use our gravel, we have to. To grow a good county that. I'd like to continue to use it, but.
I think especially on, like you said, on the higher traffic roads, because we get, there's a lot of truck traffic.
There, there are, and, and this is for, I took prices for this year because I don't have, but they, it's very. It's been in very small change, for, for instance, here, the changes, um, this is coming out of Williams Sports, they're going to Kimland. Um, right now, we're in Kimland, Rogers, to get our. Fifty-three's and, and stone like that, um, so.
Use the highway show, like, certainly use.
Correct, yeah.
And you said it's gonna be west level?
We would go, yeah, yeah, sorry, west level. It's all, so the price is more over there because they haul down, they have a truck involved, but it's closer for us, we can.
Quick turnover. And it's six of one, half a dozen of. What they quoting in the. For ten, I said, let you know.
It's fifteen, we follow it with the. And it's also in earth. Uh, yeah, third page, okay, it's eighteen fifty, but it's, it's eleven seventy-five, twelve fifty, I think. One, one of the two up there at Kimland, so by the time you got a truck in here. Maintenance in their territory.
Have you ever talked to them about their trucking room to see if they can come down a little bit and buy it?
I, I haven't yet because this is the first time I. Multiple things as far as this goes, so, yeah, we need to price down for ten thousand, ten, yeah.
Yeah, sometimes it'll work.
Yeah, so, and we may have to, I'd say three more, you know, to speak to that.
Set amount?
Yeah.
I knew too, all too well that language.
Yep, Jason wanted to pull the Cambridge line, uh, it says, uh, form. And Scott figured there, who you consider that, traps, well, that's what I thought. Okay. Um, our, our sign budget, I'm increasing our sign budget because we've had. We've had a lot of theft going on or. Growing, growing road signs and it's just, I mean, really take my toll on my energy, so. Maybe the I D markers.
What's the consulting fees?
That's what I was.
Saying twenty twenty-three, you didn't spend any.
We put that in the budget last year for, um, anything with like. Rogers are to, to do any type of stuff with this or, um, we have another. Another line for contract services, we pull just out of those, anything for U S audit rating, engineering, on-call agreements, stuff, we use that. You know, most of this. So, I'm eleven thirty-five. One thousand dollars, three, three, two, five.
Why are you looking at that? The bridge repairs. Significant increase.
A very significant increase, um, and if you look at that fact, it. The first, the first thing, U S I, that's in there is to bridge one of, uh, nine five. Um, this is just south of six fifty north on Foster Road. Um.
That's just scared them for twenty-four.
Yeah. So I'm basically, I'm about two years behind on my bridge rehab replacement. And, uh, this is, neither, these are the next two bridges on probably list, the needs rehab and replacement. I'd asked him two firms to give me. Bids on this as far as what costs for engineering fees and gave him a scope of work, project out of money and. U S I was quite a bit higher, so we asked H W C engineers to give us there's one and. They just went from a fairy and apples to apples, so. U S I wanted to see what they had missed. They, they revised the price, so something.
Is this just for one oh two?
It's just.
Or one oh?
It's the bridge one, then the L G F said you better get it. Is Cambridge one that the L G F said, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, uh, there must be enough funds and, uh, carryover and. Cover that, but, you know, we are at the maximum rate on the bridge fund, so it can, can't raise that, um, but. If, if we're gonna get a sheet, we're gonna get a sheet if we got that. Um, the cameras. I love the.
I know.
Um, okay, well, uh, somebody have your sheet from, what, what do you, what do we start a year with?
In Cambridge.
At eleven thirty-five.
Started with one point thirty.
When did we budget?
We have one point six.
We have one point six, okay, so we've not spent.
No.
Okay, so, uh.
We've taken in three hundred thousand more than we've spent. Okay.
Budget request, one point five or six of the L G S must be. Okay with that, then. I could. I mean, we do have to take care of my bridges.
And that sounds like it's been a long time coming.
Yeah, so, but then bridge inspection probably next year is gonna go back, because I'll get a new contract.
What, um, yeah, bridge inspection should, is down to, uh, forty thousand this year, but next, the next year, it's gonna be back to the high, probably close to the.
Something quick block then.
Yeah, yeah. What, what do you anticipate bridge replacements in twenty twenty-six?
In twenty twenty-six, um, it would be the next bridge south on Foster Road, which would be bridge one of three, um. And I have that in, what is it, M V H? Ten, eleven, seven, three.
We have, just for practical, another year and hang that down the road, essentially, we, we have a, approximately, I'm sort of that, our share, our, our share.
Right, yeah.
Here, eleven, seven, three, is that good?
No. It's not on here, it's not at twenty twenty-six, we're. Four, so engineering fees.
Uh, for bridge one. One oh three. It would be around a hundred and sixty-four thousand for this year.
In total.
And that's just for engineering fees.
On what of the bridge though?
Yeah.
I'm ready.
In twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, so.
Yeah, yeah.
There.
That's to get the plans done, that's no construction cost, right, it's just to get, try to stay a year ahead on projects so we can. Get back to rotation, yeah.
Yeah.
And is that the only bridge?
Yeah, that's cause I, I. I will be able to.
Okay.
Are you, let me look and see, I'm gonna make sure that's lost somewhere else. Paul Burks, are you intending to be replacing Paul Burks?
Um, I did, yes, I didn't, I don't really believe I raised my. We're staying, we're staying the same with Paul, which we're doing pretty well.
Uh, you catch your concrete budget to zero?
Yes, sure, we don't use the concrete.
By two minutes. I can freeze that, what, what do you plan to?
I increase that for any bridge approaches that we need to replace, um. More. Pockets, uh, paving over, call for something to replace.
Okay.
And I don't know the, the cost of asphalt's going to be next year, I'm just kind of basing it all of a. Three to four percent increase.
Okay, your, your covered bridge repairs are gonna be up. We'll be cutting that back because, um. They're spending from twenty-two and twenty-three's money, but in, um, so we'll only have next year budget. What we take in this year for repairs, and we'll probably maybe add estimate for May's, next May's. Um, that, I, you know, I think they're getting a lot of repairs done, but then we're gonna need. We wanna build that fund up, because Wallace covers race, so we need the next, I don't know, that need work done on it, so. Um, but a hundred and thirty property, well, since they've spent. Want to say a hundred and.
Six thousand.
Hundred and six thousand.
Yeah, ninety-six.
Oh, ninety-six thousand so far this year. Okay.
I have a, I have a question, Lloyd, with, unless you wanna explain what we're talking about, and I can go off. Um, the road grader.
That one, well.
Yeah.
Is this the road grader that we're, we're being like right now, or is this an additional?
No, this would be a trade-in.
A trade-in.
Yeah, we'll trade in when. Or I mean, that would be under your lease and another time, right? It's either that or we buy it out, I didn't not have a lease for helping or. Our lease is.
Their lease out.
Release out, and then I, I broke that down for you guys in the last, in the fourth page, there. Um. We'll drop two this year. And then next year we'll drop to four. And should be back into. Pretty good standings as far as that goes, um. So there is an option on that. That grader to either lease it for five years or just buy it outright with the trade.
Okay, so the current one that we have, where we own, correct?
Yes.
The one you were saying trading in, not the one on our sleeves.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That's actually pretty good. The lease was for two graders, we have, we have three graders that we learned that.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the one that pays off in twenty-five, so two graders don't get off.
Like fifty-five thousand dollars a year, hundred ten thousand a year for.
For the two.
And worth the two for a five year, right?
Yeah. It's something twenty-six. But there's another grader that pays sixty thousand, you know, that's up in twenty-five.
What's the new grader with us?
Three hundred and. Seventeen thousand dollars.
Got one of the questions you're. You know, we talked about completing the road. Up to the bridge down in Covington, and he said that the other day. That there was some problems with the edge of the bridge, it's a little rough. We have to do that, don't have to do that, that's better. We just do a switch.
Shouldn't that be on I dots for the county? That, what they're talking about from the cemetery down to that bridge, since it's not in the city limits. Why isn't that on that end dot west, the bridge, or no, the, the road that they're not paving?
That's just where the jurisdiction stops. On the, so that map that we have in the dot. We, we use that for our scope of work for community cross-explanations, and that's just where the, the project was terminated at, that's where jurisdiction stopped.
So it is on our inventory of, of roads, right?
No, Eleventh Street is not on our.
Okay. And why not? It's Houston City. Yeah, and nothing was chewed up, you said it like ninety.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing was chewed up.
No, no.
All right, the city maps and end dot maps don't match up.
Right, so we need to, so.
You can bring.
We need to get with the end dot, get that fixed.
Well, do you give send out or do you give city?
Yeah, I know. Uh, and we, we discussed on Monday that the, Mountain County paid for quite a bit from the wide.
East street.
I'll find a nursing home and make it bad.
Okay, except end dot pays somebody for that, or it'll be either paid to city or the petty.
Okay.
The county, so end dot should be able to tell us who they're paying tax dollars to for that section of road.
I think I showed Tom and Jim, uh. You click on that road, it shows jurisdiction, it's a city street.
Yeah, okay.
So, and it's not on my road inventory list that I have.
Okay, so cities get paid from.
Yes.
Okay, so then city, right, if they want that paid, they need to pay. Because they're getting tax dollars double instead of that, so.
Okay, um, Jay, getting back to this grader. Have you gotten other quotes from anyone else?
No, I don't know. West, west side has been, um.
I know they've worked with us.
Worked with us really well, um. So.
Well, this will be the year that you probably ought to shop around because we're gonna get hungry because it's going to get cheaper, yeah.
I've been told that from a really quick regard, I, I'm at the farm construction side.
So what, what are our costs would be, the grader will be two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars with that trade-in.
Okay. What, I now have another question about the road graders, and I know that the north grader sits at the DeSider Farm. Do we have to pay him anything for that to sit there?
We pay him fifty dollars a, a year for use of electricity to plug down at one or two, that's about it.
Have you ever checked into getting drags? Instead of graders?
We have, we don't have the people to use it, so.
Right, right. Need a tractor too to do that.
You're right, yeah, which we, we have a tractor that can do.
Just a question that I've been asked, so I'm just asking, hasn't all that question.
So are there any more questions on page thirty-eight on the Cambridge?
No.
Well, let's go to page fifty-two, local roads and streets. Raise contractual services.
We raised our thirty thousand, yes, we raised contractual services out, um, for. Any on-call agreements to any consultants that we're gonna be doing quickly. Uh, the prices of engineering keep rising, um. This is not just set for one. Consulting firm, this is whoever we're allowed to go with. And we, that, that one, I, I, that's, that includes, so that includes our. Violetic software. That we use for the, for the road, uh, asset management, about seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Um, our charts, our charts, policy years. Fifteen hundred. So.
Seven and a half, I think, the L G F, all these questions, they're coming in, right, because, because we have a bit of balance over there, so. Yeah, I see gas, oil, please. So anybody have any questions on?
Six sixteen.
Okay. Sorry, any more questions on, okay, let's go to page fifty-five, county highway restricted.
This is the one you have to cut, isn't it?
Yeah, it's restricted and unrestricted, right? Uh, and what's? What the L G F is their reputation?
Uh, six hundred and some thousand.
Between the two?
Mm-hmm, and um. They overcame. Built twice, which was two hundred thousand, put it back in. So. We put quite as much.
So, and four hundred fifty, six hundred fifty thousand, okay.
Is that between two funds or just one?
That's the, the restricted and the un-restricted.
In any way, we've got to lock them together. They don't separate them out, but. They want them separated out when you do it at the county level, right? Doesn't make a bit of sense to me, but. It's confusing.
It really is.
It is.
Um, so, okay, these spring laws, it's going out then?
Are you anticipating this John Bear, the new grader being on lease?
Well. I wasn't, I, I didn't know. That's why I dropped both options to see what everyone thinks, um. If, if it's there, I, I wouldn't mind just purchasing it outright. I will save about, I think. Westside told me we'd save approximately thirteen to fourteen thousand dollars by not, by not leasing it. So. Um, the thing with this restricted budget is. I was asked to put in the matching fortune of our community crossings for next year, which is, we're, we're guessing five hundred thousand. You don't see them lowering the amount from one point five to come in again. So. That was a huge hit for the restricted.
I, that would take care of the increase.
That would take care of it.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it would, but we absolutely want to apply for community crossing grants, because I mean. We get too many dollars worth that, worth for half a million dollars, it's. Well, worth it, but.
I don't know where this match came from, fire years, because it's the first year that it's.
I think we take it out of county general in the past, but our county general budget has just been hit so hard that uh. And you have excess this year, that's why we asked to be taken out of yours. Now, can some of that be taken out of? Uh, the two funds that we have, like local roads and streets. And then, I mean, I don't.
Kim Bridge here.
No, no, Kim Bridge, but uh, roads and streets. Because it is a road, we don't, we're doing. I mean, even if we took.
Half of it.
Half, a hundred thousand, thousands a year.
I, I don't know, um, I know a couple other counties have used, maybe a different fund, but I don't.
Okay, well, and that's not when we come down, but during our final. One through on, on these budgets, we can look like that and. Calling you back and see what you can use, you know, we could.
Right.
Add that up.
And, and just to let you guys know, the, the increase in the bridge repairs is all designed of. Bridge, uh, one. Did, like I said, just trying to stay a figure ahead, that's the, that's the fees that I was providing.
Oh, okay, so the hundred and sixty-four, we don't need to be thinking about that for. Twenty twenty-six budget, because we budgeted in twenty twenty-five. It's, it's, yeah, okay. Um. Hey, that was, next question was gonna ask about that. Enterprise, are they raising their?
Lease surround fees, we, put it in just in case I don't, but I had an extra five thousand dollars, I don't know if that's going to be the case or not. Like I said, these, these leases are open-ended pretty well, so they just go with the market and tell us.
He just got. What, two or three new trucks, three new trucks?
We got, yeah, six, we're waiting.
That, that price changed.
Yeah.
We pay it for the whole year. But that price changes when they. Change leasing, you know, change vehicles.
It runs out.
But twenty twenty-three, when we paid thirty-eight thousand, we budgeted sixty for this year, how much have we paid so far next year?
You're.
I didn't think of some, this is that much. Thank you.
Eleven seventy-three.
He's one, out of eleven seventy-three?
Yes.
How many? Is it thirteen?
We have thirteen. And three of those are the uh. Uppited mechanic trucks. That we're not turning any of them, so.
You know, that's.
All those, we spent a lot of money on those.
I was gonna say, are they all at the same time restricted? Are they just extending the leases on those?
They're just extending the leases on those. From what I understand, kind of same old, Josh, the owners.
I'll see when they pay.
Yeah, we got three, we made extra for those boxes and.
Right, yeah, all the outfitting.
So you got three new ones, go get one more?
We have.
Looks like part of the enterprise leases on.
Yeah.
A different fund, that's part of two, I. The, the graders looks like it's going up, you know, fifty-four, seven, sixty-four, it's because it's coming off of this other.
Well.
So is.
We, we asked for an additional for that grader lease because. Uh.
There was.
Yeah.
Done it, yes, me.
Okay, so.
That's funds going down, if I'm saying. The one seventy-six.
You gotta get away from all these leases, we're hitting, this county is leased to them. But I wonder what those three mechanics trucks are worth?
I ran a hundred and five thousand. Uh.
More than a hundred and thirty hours ago.
And that's, that's more, I mean, that's. There's more vehicles involved than just those three and two, yeah, we have thirteen, thirteen vehicles. You know, when we first. Talk about leasing, I was anti-lease, but then. When I looked at past budgets of what those vehicles cost us.
You just sat there, she can't.
You just gotta. Especially now with vehicles cost, and we've had to replace those thirteen vehicles.
Not that right now, unfortunately.
Hundred and twenty-four thousand altogether, there was sixty-four thousand, six twenty-nine out of. MBH for, for enterprise. Oh, wait a minute. What's, we would credit, go out the street first, there was a.
So just on the trucks alone? How much?
There's twenty-four thousand, most of these. For, how many vehicles on thirteen?
She includes the three trucks?
Yes, we have thirteen vehicles.
And that's sixty-five thousand on each budget for next year, and on your sheet, you show that enterprise is a hundred and thirty thousand, so. You just divided the.
Yeah, took some out of restricted and some out of the non-restricted.
You gotta keep it large, maybe, maybe. Not use. Yeah, I mean, all we do is change the oil and tires along with anything else, yeah.
Jason, you know the residual on those three?
I do not.
What was your question, I didn't?
The residual. Mechanic.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any more questions on page fifty-five? Restricted. It's got fifty-seven highway administration.
The increase in equipment?
Yeah. The challenge, telephone. Um, that's a big jump on telephone, two thousand to six thousand. And.
So. What is sparklight, is that?
Is that, you can. There are all the.
Right, one day to be this.
There's, yeah, we have, we have.
We have the.
There, we have the board house.
Does the internet. Sparklight. Will they raise our rates?
In, I mean. Yeah.
So on the, within the increase of thirty-five thousand dollars is for?
The grader.
The grader?
Yeah. Wow.
What we're trying to do is keep in rotation, um. After a certain, certain amount of hours on those road graders, there's a very big. Bow flashing project that has to be done to it, which is very expensive and not covered under warranty, so we're trying to keep them under that five thousand hour. Um. Time frame, try to rotate them out. We're getting, we're getting, you know, five to seven years on these grades, so.
So I can come, I can keep the hours up.
Yeah. And, um. I mean, that's, that includes the. What they call, prevented maintenance plan where John Dear comes to take samples, they, you know. Do the work if they don't.
I thought that two and five didn't have to put it there.
That's included in our, we, we kept that off the. The cost of the grader, because we can pay that out of our garage budget. Because the hourly breakdown of that is. You know.
So three hundred and seventeen, then we kind of. It more.
Right.
It's not gonna happen.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
There's two different ends, well, the, the first one is for three hundred and seventeen, and that includes if you pay outright for this. Preventive maintenance, but he says we might have been at two and five, we just prevented maintenance, we made out of the budget, basically.
We can pay that out or fit it for. Garage budget, because the service tables on this, I mean, two hundred and fifty hours is a thousand dollars, so we, that coverage on preventative, okay. Which we still have warranty and everything for that, including that price.
Yeah, the option is to lose it.
Yeah.
For two and five, the one that's going. Sixteen, four thousand, for five.
Okay, great. That's, that's what we're trying to do, is just to keep our trucks and our graders in rotation.
So this equipment under highway administration is not on any of the lease. No, so, okay, that's what we use to borrow our tandem this year. Okay.
Which we should have that.
Two hundred fifty was used by the.
Right, yes.
Bye, boy.
The tandem, that truck.
Okay, and you have a question on page fifty-seven, highway administration. It's got fifty-eight. Eight nine seven repair.
So. We, we, we pretty much, we, we knocked some. Uh, salt money out because. We have plenty in there and. The amount of salt that we get, the price has not changed for the last five years. Um, so we kind of knocked that down to, to help with the budget, uh, also the gravel laying that, we just had two thousand dollars in there, knocked it down to zero. Um, by two minutes. The, the big change came with the grader blades. Uh, the material cost for those grader blades is going up, they're about six hundred dollars a foot. For, for blades. Um, we have seven, seven graders with fourteen-foot blades and one grader with twelve-foot blade. And, uh, we can get about a big year. Obviously, some blades depending on the weather, in winter town.
Most two grader you got setting on your lot out there.
Mm-hmm.
You say one's seven foot, one's a what, twelve?
We have, no, we have seven that are. Fourteen-foot blades, and then we have one grader that has a twelve-foot blade on it.
And they've gone up thirty, thirty thousand dollars, that's what you want to budget, that's over, overweight you had.
Yes, yes. Now it puts us roughly around sixty-eight thousand for all, a, a set of blades for each grader. Six hundred dollars off, right, yeah. And, uh, the shop owners got prices off three, three people, so. And two of these leases will be falling off this year. Um. The increase, increase in the bridge repairs is we have a couple of, um. Small structures, I'll say, that are wooden deck bridges that we would like to attach with bigger box forwards, to make it easier for equipment to get through. So if we can do one of those each year. In a couple of three years.
Hey, if I, if I have any questions on page fifty. Hey, so page fifty-nine, the general and, and.
Let's be planning on buying some serious tires.
Tires are just like the blades, they. Prices continue to grow up, um. Again, we have quotes from three or four different places and. It's all the equipment we have. And our, two, or, or both of our lawyers will be due for a set of tires here soon, which, you know, those are big, big pieces of equipment. Tracks from the excavator.
I understand that.
You know, it's gas and oil expense at this year. Because. You spent three hundred and eight thousand in twenty twenty-three, and we invested three hundred thousand for this year, and.
We still, I think, have a hundred and forty-four thousand left, I don't know, to get some cash here, so, okay.
So we've done the same amount, right, so, okay, okay. Uh, what's the, uh, the repairs and maintenance?
That's on here, that's one of our, uh, our main garage fund that we use for the shop or. Repairs on equipment. Batteries for. Tire, tires. Any practicals when you, special jobs or anything? Just maintenance.
That should pay that PM.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? That I have?
Who's that, who is that, um? That new equipment that you bought to Michael Scott's Road, where is that?
Where is that? That's under your traction services.
Where?
That's in, level eleven sixty-nine.
Eight fifty-two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Back to the back.
What's the level seventy-five? Comes out of contractual services.
I'll change fifty-two to that, yeah, that fifty-one.
This is fifty-nine, I just. Didn't see it.
It's like the second page in that section. It comes out of there.
Okay.
Um, traction, so.
If I have any other questions, this is the base. Everything else, um. No, I think of.
Seriously.
Okay, and given when you think I need to start with your, maybe cutting some items out or? Well, we.
Yesterday.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, yeah. We'll have more, more hearings in September at the day meeting on the ninth, and then we will have a night meeting in September, I'm not sure exactly, but. That's when we're gonna have to do all of that and go through everything again. Page by page, you know, I kind of, earning salaries and all that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. They show me.
It's in Canada.
I know, I got different double stuff.
You miss.
Cause this is another step that I worked on, it's easier.
I would, yeah. Yeah. Okay, yeah. Yeah, we've never lost that check.
Yeah. Towards the back of that section, you know. Check one of that. And this is the end, is it correct?
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah. That is one, two, three. Ready? I'm ready, okay. Please open. Um. Before we get started, I, I'd like for you to explain. Vacation, it's cause we have a discussion at our last meeting and how. Cause I know the hours of. EMTs are different, I think it's forty-eight hours one week and seventy-two the next week, right? Yeah, so they work a hundred and twenty hours in a two-week period.
Yeah, versus seventeen days, right? And nine days, then we work sixteen hours overtime.
Right, okay. But they work a hundred and twenty hours in a two-week period, that's their schedule. Correct?
Uh, seventeen days. Not twenty-six days, that's only on second day, because of how the rotation works. One week they'll work forty-eight hours, which is eight hours overtime. And the next week they work three twenty-four hour shifts, which is thirty-two hours. Which even went up to forty hours overtime. For that, for that pay period.
Right.
And there's seventeen pay periods where they would have forty hours overtime. And then there's nine days. Where they'll have, like, one week will be two days, which is forty-eight hours, and the next week, a few days, which is forty-eight hours, it's sixteen hours. Sixteen. In that day period.
A whole person.
A whole time.
Can you send us that visual?
Yes, yes, cause. So they don't work forty-eight, seventy-two. The whole year. They, the only, the way the rotation works is they're on twenty-four, all forty-eight. So they rotate around, so like, uh, this week, um. B shift would work Sunday, Wednesday, Saturday. Following week, they'll work Tuesday, Friday.
Yeah.
And then A shift. Would work there on today, so they'll work Tuesday, Friday. And next week they'll work Monday, Thursday. And then C shift. And that's how the twenty-four, forty-eight works, and if you look at the calendar schedule that. Patty gave you in December. That's the exact same rotation. You married us?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm seeing the last few meetings basis, and I understand what her said, but I work in a diagonal line across the town. So, I'm a visual worker.
I guess the question is, what's, what, what? What, what's, what's the question about? Okay, so. In the courthouse, they work five days, right? So they, a week vacation, they get five days off, how do you figure vacation on a forty-eight and a seventy?
So basically, what they're doing is, is because the county recognizes in days. Instead of hours, they recognize it in days, but if she takes a day off, it's a day. County policy stays. You get five days vacation after the first year. So their day isn't, their day is considered a twenty-four hour shift. Versus what courthouse has, myself, or my office manager has eight hours, that's our day. So then they take a day off, they're taking that bullshit off, it's twenty-four hours, that's their day. So, you know, if, if they work three days, that's their three-day week, they take a day off, they get twenty-four hours, they're, they're off their twenty-four hours. Because the policy is stating days, not hours.
So your policy is based on hours?
The county policy is set on days. That's the county general policy, after first year is five days, years two through nine, ten days, ten through fourteen, fifteen days. You hit year fifteen, it's twenty days, and that's the max. That's county policy, that's been county policy for years. And by law. Before, in the old system, when we paid. We were on fixed salary. Their vacation was figured into that, was bigger than into that base salary. That was where, where the challenge came from was this. These guys took a day off, they technically lost money because they lost that. You know, that overtime money, so when we switched to this way, to the hourly. By law, we have to pay them straight time for that time off. And that came from that.
Yeah, you have to pay them straight.
Yeah, so if he, Josh's long week is this week, so we're Sunday, Wednesday, Saturday. He took today off, tomorrow off. He'll get. His, and he works the other two days. You'll get. Which are twenty-four hour days. Forty of those hours go straight time. Eight hours goes to time and a half. Tomorrow goes towards straight time, so when you add the forty hours and the twenty-four. He gets sixty-four hours of straight time and eight hours of overtime.
Basically, I'm assuming, I'm assuming my, hey, they're getting that. Or depend the person that we're paying to fill in.
Yeah, you gotta turn around, yeah.
Because those people are already.
Exactly, so backfill is where, that's where. The backfill is where the challenge is, and, and that's where, you know, you don't have a part-time person to fill in. Now the backfill is full-time.
Over time. So. How many people are in your part-time pool? I know we talked about this the other day.
Twenty-four, twenty-five. And that's another thing, you had brought up a very valid point at the last council meeting, was. Denise brought up was, I was telling you where my part-time is, I told her they had full-time jobs, she brought up about one, it's PRN. I always had said they're PRN individuals, but. I've been pushed back and said, no, part-time pool is. But they're technically PRN people because they only can fill in when they can fill in. And the chat, and one of the questions you had brought up about was trying to, you know, just go out and go hire somebody just to work that. You, Jeff, you see the schedule, Tom, you've seen the schedule, you see the openings. We have openings every week. Every week.
It's not usually gonna be the same.
And, and, and so, it, it goes back to those days. That, there's days guaranteed open every week. Part-time people, PRN, wherever you wanna call them, have an opportunity to sign up for that, but if they're not available. Full-time, sign up for it. You're not gonna find individuals to come in and work hard time consistently. So I don't know if that answered your question. Or not.
I think we're just trying to find a solution to even help with your overtime.
So, did it? And it's hard. I, I think, and I went back and listened, because I, I listened to the December eleven meeting, because I had, wanted to find out where. Where we was with, or on a raise, you know. Cause I asked some of you guys, do you want me to put in for a raise for the paramedics, the advanced EMTs, which I did, I put in a five percent rate. Wasn't really anything discussed in that. Per se, I think we, because of the change in the hourly rate and all that, we went ahead and just incorporated that in, but nothing was set for twenty twenty-five. Of forego on the, the raise, so that's why we put that in. But Denise, you had brought up, and Kelly, both of you were really concerned, when you start crunching the numbers. You were in six to seven hundred thousand dollars in overtime. And when you look at my numbers. I'm dead on. And so. I'm looking at different options, uh, as you guys know, um. Patty gave you guys the fifty-two week schedule. Where it showed that each shift would get a day off every quarter. I believe it was, which would be a savings, right now, if they stay on the schedule they are, they'll get eight hundred and twenty-four hours of overtime. If we go to what she suggested. It would go to seven hundred and twenty-eight hours, which is ninety-six hours per person. Um, I have a phone call into Park County's EMS director, Julie Lozong. Um, she is following that right now, that seven hundred and twenty-eight hour schedule right now as we speak. Um, but I wanted to ask her, who is filling in? Those spots. Is it part-time people, PR people, full-time people, I don't know who. Cause I go back to the same question is, if we follow that. On paper, it looks like we're saving ninety-six hours. Who's gonna fill those, like, backfill those in? You know, is it gonna be full-timers, so if it's full-time, now we're right back to our overtime. And I think when we finish out this year, we're gonna be. We're gonna be close, I, I'll say right now, my projection right now, we're gonna get six hundred and seventy thousand. An overtime. You already, I wanna ask you. The only way that I see. That, um, you're gonna change overtime, is you're gonna change schedules. And that's a nightmare, again. Do you ever have anybody eat straight forty hours? I don't pick up straight forty hours, I just mess with the other day.
Right.
You know, you're twenty-four, and you're working, I mean, eight, ten, twelve, the next day, you go, a change. Straight forty hours, no overtime. The only thing I see, they have to work twenty-four hours. So they're gonna work a portion of that day, go home, and now, when they come back into work. That, that gets to be kind of a tough situation, how many people? In a day. Do you have active on? A truck, one day, in a twenty-four hour period?
In your, in your shop.
We have six that are, if, if, we have six that do a full twenty-four shift. And we have two who do twelve hours. Right now, as we speak. Cause we have the six that, you know, cover, you know, we have two people in Attica on the twenty-four hour truck. We have four in Petersburg on the twenty-four hour truck. We have two on the twelve hour truck, which stays in Petersburg right now, but will either one. Get into rotation. With runs and either take runs from out of Petersburg, or they will elect to go to Attica and help out Attica when they go out on calls. So, in a twenty-four period, eight. How does Park County? Just to kind of hold that talk, how does Park County get ninety-six hours again? What was that? So what they do is every quarter, it, it kind of goes back to. Depends on how long you wanna be here, uh, I can just try to break it down as quick as I can, it's called a Kelly Day. We talked, we talked about that before. So a Kelly Day was established a long time ago in the fire service. What was happening was, they had to figure out how to control their overtime. FLSA will come in, set us. Standard amount of hours, you can get, anything above that's overtime. Every three months. A shift, A, B, or C, will work ten days in a twenty-eight day period. So if you take twenty-four times ten, it's two hundred and forty hours, okay? FLSA, the, you know, Department of Labor says, anything above two hundred and twelve hours. Is considered overtime. So. Those months that they work ten days. They would take that extra day, pay that, call that a Kelly Day. Maybe take it off, not get, you know, penalized or anything like that, take it off, that would cut their overtime down to only four hours.
Unless we have more people, you're gonna fill it with your full-time people, who already have overtime, and they pay overtime, so it's not gonna.
No, exactly. And unfortunately. When we went to this rotation, this ABC rotation. Two years ago, when I came to you to ask for the four additional people to, to go to that twenty-four, forty-eight hour rotation. I was on the phone quite a bit with Abby, trying to figure out, I thought I had it figured out, I thought we could run this. Run this, and she said, being an EMS stand-alone service, we cannot. Follow a true Kelly Day. We can create our. Own per se, and if you remember, Addy called it the twenty-four, forty-eight rotation. Cause you can't call it a true Kelly Day, so you can either, like, Benton County calls it a modified Kelly. Some call it that, if, if you follow it.
Oh, and you're doing that twenty-four hour shifts?
Uh, we've been doing those, I've been here twenty-five years, we've done twenty-four shifts for, and they actually did them back before I. They've been going on for thirty-plus years. Back a long time ago, they used to have, just have one person at the old station, one person, they took a phone call. And that's how they got their, their notification, and then they waited on somebody and committed, now. Attica, when Attica was established, you know, it was established on eight-hour days, when it first originally started. But as time changed, then it went to twelve hours, and then it went to.
And they work twelve-hour days in Attica, did they work four days a week?
No, they don't anymore, we used to, yeah, well, we had, yeah, we had, the way the rotation was is, um, for example, I was the Petersburg crew. I would work twenty-four hours, first truck out. Second day, I was on, on call, you remember, we used to do the on-call process, and then I worked the front twelve. And, uh, Jenny was able to, oh, higher back in two thousand and one. Four additional people, and they would work the night twelve. And in two thousand and nine or ten, we made the change to where we went to full twenty fours up there. Do the rotation. I am looking at other rotations. But I've not physically been able to sit down and write it out and out into a schedule and look at. You know, how the pays don't work. You know, how the pays don't work. Um, but I think it comes back to, you know. The vacation time. You know, when somebody takes a day off, who's gonna fill it? You know, uh, we try to fill with part time, and you know, individuals, the R N or N P O. They're not available, you know, the full time pick it up. Uh, if we go to another, like a modified Kelly day, or the twenty four forty eight, whatever you wanna call it. You're gonna have those four, you're actually gonna have more than that, because you're looking at, you know, the six people. Or I take a day off. So you're looking at quite a few days that you're not gonna fill in a whole year. Just to try to save ninety six hours, potential. So, um, I don't know if that answered your question deadly, or yes or no, bro.
Yeah, uh, your calendar has has my schedule for this month. And then that will help you, you can take what Colleen says are pay three days, and then that calendar will show you how many weeks I have. At twenty, about forty eight, and seventy two versus forty eight, forty eight, in my pay.
He's he's gonna have seventeen pays at forty hour. And nine pays is sixteen.
So where are you right now? Are you on, you're off, right?
Today's my off day, this is my life, first of this is my long week, so this is the Sunday, Wednesday, Saturday for me.
When do you go back?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, four A, twenty four. Two o'clock or? Here's what.
I'm forty eight all.
Okay, I'm with you. So that's the slide.
Yes, you can have, yeah, yeah, seventeen weeks and.
Seventeen pays.
Seventeen pays.
Have forty hours overtime. Remember, the next one week will have eight hours, and second week is thirty two hours.
Then you have nine.
Nine sixteen hours. So that potential of eight hundred and twenty four hours of overtime. When you figure that out.
Okay, that's what I figured, because I I. I just assumed that they worked forty eight, seventy two the whole year. Which would be a thousand and forty hours overtime for you to take that. This. Schedule that's eight hundred and twenty four, so they don't work.
Schedule.
Twenty six weeks, forty eight hours, and twenty six weeks, seventy two, so they were. Now, I mean, that is the way they wrote, how it rotates through, so they were eighteen weeks at. Forty eight hours, and they were thirty four weeks at seventy two hours.
And that was just two, two forty eight and then seventy.
Yeah.
This should be backwards.
So you try to figure it out weekly, instead of on bi- bi- bi-weekly, okay?
Um, yeah, I'm I'm just trying to figure out, because with. You know, we might be better off hiring a couple more people. That might help on the overtime. I don't know, it might be worth it, um. Spend off a lot of overtime, but if they're working over forty hours, they deserve to be paid overtime pay.
Right, and that's, that's where we're at, and and. Unless we can, and I have got feelers out looking at other, you know, other types of schedules, which will, you know, not saying we're taking anything away from them, but. Keep them, you know, competitive with their wages, but also. Look out for the benefit of the, of the, of the budget too.
That's where I am. Same, but that's where I am, you go, because you, I don't wanna see, I want them to have the benefit of getting overtime.
Right.
I also wanna see them to have a day. But for, whatever. You still need the vacation, but. In that schedule. If we can get some relief. In a schedule sometime, that changes that overtime, but yet give them a chance to do it. So we don't take everything away. That's where I am, because. I've written. And I know one they have to go. Well, I think they need rest. And I wanna, like, say you go back tomorrow and you're off a day, but there's a week, when you don't have that. There's a schedule when you.
This week for him is as long as three, otherwise he only works two days a week. And that's everybody, they shift, B, he's on B shift, C shift, they all have that rotation.
Unless they work pickup overtime.
Yeah, unless they pick up extra, and that's their obligation.
What's the maximum they can do, because I know I've seen a lot of.
Um, we try to. We've been really watching it, we try to keep it down, um. You know, as much as we can, you know, there's, the other challenge you run into is is, if there's nobody to sign up for it, and they signed up for it. You got either one, you let them have, let them do that, or we have to shut a truck in.
It concerns me that they're driving after being on, or still on.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, we, we gotta, the safety is the fact.
But the one thing is, and I, I'm not just, and you're right, but one thing is with these, they do rotate their calls, so they're not like. Josh is not like getting call after call after call stacked on top. That's one of the things that, one of the good benefits with the four trucks is. I know for his shift, but they work together and they rotate through, so Josh today may be third out. Well, he may not go out until five o'clock in the afternoon. Because of the rotation, so they rotate through. Better than what we used to, long time ago, when we were running, you were the primary, there was a backup. That primary took every call. And the backup. Basically, setting really just was there, in case another call come out while they were on call, so they could get hammered. This this crew here could get hammered with five or six calls, and not even this backup crew.
My, my, my high number is four hundred and fifty two miles to launch data.
But we rotate around, try to help that. To keep that down, because that, that has been a concern.
I'd work that primary to, give me a break. Uh, give me a break. But there's instances where they all go out.
Yeah, and there is, there's instances, we have no control around. Yeah, we have all four of them out on calls, and and it, we can't, it's unfortunate. And the other thing I look at is, and I'll, we did it, when we first started off the twelve hour truck, we ran the twelve hour truck on one person. And I. Kind of looked at it as, hopefully maybe if our department would help out driving, but here's the challenge, they're all volunteers. We have seven volunteer fire departments in our community. They're not always available, so now we're sending an ambulance out into the community, just one person. So, that's where we run into the challenge is, is do we shut that truck down? Or do we staff it, make sure it's staffed?
It's kind of old time, it's kind of old time schedule, that's how I got involved, because I became.
You talk about safety, that's a huge thing, and we try our best to make sure.
Let's look at some of these other things besides the overtime I got. Uh, what's this insurance? There was no money budgeted for this year, now it's seventeen hundred for next year.
That's what's in your budget.
And solve that group that helps us, the insurance finder.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So we pay now, counsel every band now.
Yeah.
Coming out of yours, okay.
Yeah, we're.
So that's in that company, okay, how come your telephone? You paid seventy four hundred and twenty twenty three, budget eight thousand this year, and you're on a budget of forty two hundred.
We're getting ready to switch, we are going to Wintec. And I can get Wintec for five hundred megabytes. For eighty five dollars a month, whereas Sparklight for fifty gigabytes for three hundred and seventy five dollars.
There you go, I, well, what happened to that?
Yeah, uh, it was, uh. Sparklight was like four seventy something, because we had the phone system in it. Now, we wouldn't let, we'll kind of wait with that, the phones went out, it dropped to three hundred. Uh, we've had more problems with Sparklight. Then, I was, so we reached out to, uh. Tip mom, and Wintec gets in, Brad, Brad's working on right now, trying to work with them, with getting it set up. Okay, but we will be switching to Wintec, which will be the savings.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, then the, my other question is on equipment. And I went from eleven thousand nine hundred to two hundred and twenty three thousand.
Yeah, so I kind of wanna talk a little bit about that, um, I. Um. I am putting in requests for monitors and cots. Um, I know Kelly, you had an opportunity, Tommy had an opportunity to come in. Um, look at a program called ALS three sixty, it's an asset management program. Basically, they look at, um, our cots, monitors, Lucas device. Um, all of these devices, and you can, here we go, lease program, for a ten year lease. Um, all the, all the, all those products. Um. In that ten years, you pay a flat fee every year. Uh, and then there's other amenities that come with it, and you can trade that, all those products out, like a, like. Three, four, five year mark, or new, or updated. Um, so, he brought presentation to us on just products for three ambulances. I felt it was important that we probably should do all five ambulances, so he put together a package for that. Um. I'm glad I was sitting down, it was very costly. More than what I was expecting, so I backed up on that a little bit, I was not gonna bring that to you guys, because we were looking upwards of. Three hundred thousand or more a year, to do this. So, uh, we've been looking at other types of different packages to put together, we've not come up with one that really I think will fit. I put this in because this was a backup plan. In case we didn't go with the, with the asset management program, we need to start replacing some of our equipment. So what I had put in for was two monitors. Uh, they're at a cost of fifty two thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars apiece.
Is there a? Expiration date on this?
Uh, eight, eight to ten years is what F D A says.
So it's two hundred and twenty three thousand a year for ten years?
It's, it's gonna be over three hundred thousand, for the, if you do the lease program. Now, I gave you this option. To see this, if you go this way, or if you feel you wanna go down with this, I'll, we can put a packet together and bring it into you, and you can look at it. Still, but I, I need to put this in here, so you can see, if you don't do a police program. This is what we need to start looking at going to.
And how many costs are you thinking of?
Well, I originally put in for three. Uh, but I wanna change that. Um, because I would like to see the fourth ambulance. Which is utilized by the twelve hour truck, I would like to see the complete power load system. Installed in that, which includes the power load itself, and a cot together, comes all together.
Do you ever get a chance to watch that, any of you guys, you need to watch that?
Um.
You would understand why he needs it.
Yeah, oh, I, well, my two brand new trucks I just got, have them in it. And the remount will have the power load in. Not the cots, the power load itself, the device that helps lift and everything. What I like to do is, is instead, I asked originally in this, I asked originally for three cots. I would like to back off of that, it'd be ideally to have it, but realistically, cost wise, it's gonna be. Raises, I would like to do a complete power load system, which comes in about fifty eight thousand, five seventy five. And that counts the accessories that come with it too, which is batteries and all that. And, the cots, uh, are, he quoted me, and I think we'll probably get less than this. He originally quoted me the cots of thirty three thousand eight eighty nine. Which I think will probably get it down cheaper than that, because in the power load system, they were cheaper, let it roll out as a package deal or whatever. So what I would like to propose. Would be the power load system of fifty eight, five seventy five. The power load cot one. For thirty three eight eight nine.
And what's the expiration date on those cots, because I know.
Eight to ten years.
I know we're getting close on.
We are actually, oh, right back three cots there, two thousand fifteen, now. Realistically, and ideally, I would like to ask for two power load cots, but. I know that's gonna be very costly, I would rather, if if it's not gonna work, I, I would really push apart for that complete power load system. And at least one power, brand new.
Now. I want you to tell them. Can that ten year period on that lease program?
Mm-hmm.
How you start out and how you finish, on our new, on our used equipment? Compared to approved equipment, now bring at it, because when you start talking money on these cots, and you, you've got a. Have a lease period of time, how you can change equipment out.
So if we, if you were to go with a, with an ALS, ALS three sixty program today, you've signed the contractor. They will come in and they will take all of our old stuff. We have right now, old stuff, but our stuff we have now, I think a little bit of that will be a trade in, and it would be off the, off the cost. They would take all that out and replace with all brand new. So, uh, and then you would start fresh. Um, in this ALS three sixty program is a maintenance program. So they will come in and they'll do maintenance on all the pieces of equipment, so your Lucas device, your monitors, your stair chairs. The power load systems and the cots, it's all included in this ALS three sixty program. Um, this goes along, so you can opt it, either you're three, you're four, or you're five. In your lease program, you can have them come in, if there's anything new. Updated equipment. You can have it totally replaced, or if it's not, if it's the same. Then you would just change it out for new, basically, you would take that cot that you got five years ago, you would trade it for a brand new. So then you would have it till five, you're ten. At year ten, you can make a decision, do I stay in the lease program, or do I get out of the lease program?
At what price per year?
Um, right now, it was, uh, almost pushing three hundred thousand dollars a year, for the whole program.
That per year, so times ten years, so you're gonna pay three million dollars.
Hmm, but there's some discounts in there and all that, it'll get, it it'll, it won't be quite that much, but it'll be pretty close.
Fifty eight thousand five twenty five for the lift system, is that per? Each or?
That's for one truck. That's counting the cot and the, and the power load, it's just.
So that's a cot and the power load system, so you got five of them, you're talking. Uh, fifty, about three hundred thousand right there.
Three hundred thousand totally.
You get brand new, you could buy a brand new every year.
There's nothing else in that two twenty three other than.
No, no, well, there is, I I will, okay, the two twenty three is gonna count, I've got, uh, uh. Desktop computers in there, seven five hundred in there, I believe.
What do we get for the three hundred thousand size, the cot?
You get all the equipment, like what? Uh, uh, monitors, monitor regulators, the new updated monitor regulators. The cots. Power, uh, power, uh, stair chairs. Which, to me, I don't know. You can have them, they're battery operated, Lucas devices, which are those CPR man, uh, cannibal devices. Um, you get, um, the, uh, maintenance program for each year, so basically, they come in and they go through and do the maintenance, preventative maintenance. And all those. Pieces of equipment, new batteries. Which batteries are. Astronomical right now, they're, and they're, it's very expensive.
And awesome, does it include the power load system and cot?
Mm-hmm. You said that.
Yeah, yeah, the lift system, but then. And you're gonna keep that for eight to ten years?
You can't yet.
But not, they're not gonna replace that.
Well, at year five, you can make an option, say I wanna replace all that. Well, at year five, you can make an option, say I wanna replace all that.
You have the extra cost?
No, that's all figured in that.
All big money items, they're in, they're in that lease.
Uh, I think it'd be, and maybe you have given us a breakdown, I'd like to see a breakdown of all the equipment. What it costs new to compare it to this three hundred thousand, because.
And I, I, I told you, I mentioned to you guys, I was gonna have him come in and do a presentation, uh, I still like him to do that. Um, I just wanted us in here in case we don't elect to go down that road with it. I think it's a great program, I think, I think Tom has seen it, Kelly has seen it, um, I think it's. Some of the things like. I think where we could cut some costs and still have good pieces of equipment is like. They put it in a high, higher level of stair chairs. The battery operated stair chairs, so basically stair chair is, has the tracks on it that allows us to bring somebody up out of the basement. Or down from a, a second story, you know, per se. It's battery operated, right now, we have manuals. They work fine, I think we could exclude them out of there and, you know, bring that cost down. I think the biggest where we need to look at is the mechanical CPR mechanical devices. The cots, the power loads, monitors, and the maintenance program on those. If you guys would like to look at that, I'd be more than glad to have him come in and, and do the presentation and give you a pricing on it sooner than later. And so then you could look at this here, and if this is not where you wanna be, and you wanna go towards that ALS three sixty program. Then I'm, I'm for that, but I put this in here because. I wanted you, we, we have to have something there, we need to start. Either we go with the ALS three three sixty program or we go with this. And start each year, start replacing equipment like we have in the past.
Well, these, these, uh, this equipment you told us about, if you need. You can replace, that was about a hundred fifty thousand.
That first original one, I showed you, but that was.
This one you mentioned.
Smart, that's two monitors, so fifty-four thousand each, that's a hundred.
That's a hundred five, monitors, a hundred and five, six, twenty-eight.
Yeah, three cots and thirty-one.
I mean, obviously, I'll do one. I won't know. All the equipment that we've been talking about right now. Cots, your monitors, and.
So here's what I'll do is, is how. So, let me ask you this question. When do you want me to have, I'm sure you guys want me to come in and, and show you this program so you can see it, correct?
I wanna time out.
Okay, yeah.
I wanna time out because.
Answer your question, but go ahead.
Would you go, go to Jimmy first?
So to answer your question is, is for me, yes, from what I gathered, and I don't, Kelly, if you wanna. Tell me wrong, is, is in that lease program, this is all the women that I'm asking for here now, I'm talking about, will, will be in that lease program. But you're gonna pay a certain amount of money, you're gonna pay upwards of two seventy-five to two hundred eighty-three thousand a year for ten years. Somewhere in there, give or take, if we're going to do all the ambulances.
So you're saying that one power load system plus cot is fifty-eight, five seventy-five? And you're gonna need a monitor for that at fifty-two, eight fourteen? That doesn't, that's a hundred and eleven thousand four hundred dollars, they're not just one, but that doesn't include the Lucas. Device, that doesn't include the batteries nor the maintenance. And that's just one truck. So for roughly, whatever it's going to be to do all four trucks. Is double that, I mean, five trucks would be.
Cause you want all five out there then? But then, year three, when, when we paid nine hundred thousand. Why are we gonna get replaced?
Everything.
No, I thought you said at five.
At five year mark, so third, third year, fourth year, what are we getting for three hundred thousand? You don't, you don't, you don't, you can opt out, you can opt, depend on what you wanna do, you can either do it in year three if you want to. Change everything out, or four or five. My thing is, is I would change everything out at the five year mark, and here's why. FDA makes the recommendation that all that equipment is end of, its end of life is eight years. Okay, so if you change it out at five. You, you got, and you finish your lease program at year ten, you still have three more years on that, but.
Yeah, at no cost.
And if you change out at five years. Yeah.
Okay, so if you change it year three, it doesn't start another ten year contract.
It's all in that, it's, it's all figured in that ten year contract.
So what happens if one of them goes bad in year three?
They come in and they text it and then you're stuck with it for seven years? They fix it, and, and that's part of the maintenance program, they'll fix it, because that account is being replaced then. I.
You're gonna replace it anyway, five years, if you go out at three, you're gonna replace it at five years, just use the warrant, go, you know? But I'm just saying here about everything, how much did we say, we could probably say. Uh, you could almost have the first year paid for.
Yeah, first two years, but I'm, I'm concerned about year three, four, or five.
You're gonna get in on the back end.
Here's the thing you gotta keep in mind is, if the maintenance is done yearly, we've got cots that we've had for ten years, they're still in good shape. So they're gonna stay, you know, if, if you do the year of maintenance on it, that, they're checking that stuff and making sure that it's, you know, good. So year five, basically, what you're saying is. I want a brand new cot, all brand new cots, brand new power loads, brand new monitors, everything. At year five. No matter. If there's a monitor that hadn't even been used, you're gonna get a brand new. And if there's new monitors that come out, like right now, monitor we have right now, they don't make it anymore.
I have a question that you might ask, you know, say we do this program and we're done with the second set of five years. Is there a warranty program that you can purchase for those extra three years?
Good question, and I think that would be where I would, I would highly recommend you guys, allow us to bring it in here so you can see it. Make your decision if you're gonna go with this packet. Or you wanna go with this packet.
So you'll gain your three years definitely when you have it, that lasts five years because you're gonna have warranty, you're gonna have life for three years, three more years, but.
Well, I'd like.
Pay for that, I mean.
Right, I'd like to see what the cost of everything, what's included, what the cost.
In that ALS three sixty program?
And what's in, what's included, what the cost of it is, if we bought. One new one each year for each ambulance, just every five years, you replace it compared to this. Uh, I'm okay with him, if he wants to come to September ninth meeting. I'd like for him to keep it within a thirty minute timeframe because we start hearings at ten AM, so. If he can do it the thirty minutes, I will check, but I would like all that information though before we make. The end of September, all our.
If you give us some information before we issue, we get.
Yes.
Information on the program or information on?
The information on the, even the program would be great, but especially the cost. All the, the equipment that's included.
So you want overall cost of every, all, everything I have and assets right now, it has a what within this program?
Being this program, yes.
So yeah, we just need a, a comparison.
Yeah, okay, should we have a digestion before?
Yes.
Okay.
And also.
And then information on the program, and then also overall cost of all the other assets within that.
Okay, yeah.
And also, guard, the option, see, you could even have you got your new, you could opt out at year six. You can go home, you could opt out of six years, if you don't have the money, we don't have the money, we're out of it, okay?
Now, so you're gonna pay three million dollars.
A potential somewhere in there, yeah, but there was no opting out.
I thought she said option, that was only.
Third thing is, we were looking at other options of other types of packages that we could bring in. You know, hit the main four product. And still get, you know, our bang for the buck and still keep it within reason, and not being the full time in the hall.
It was at the end of the ten year period we talked about, you can get all new equipment.
You could either renew your lease and then you could, then you could, you know, replace everything that you got. Or you could opt out, and, and you would still have three more years left on that. According to the FDA's end of life ruling, basically.
That locks us in, right, for. For ten years.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, and that's another thing.
And if I gotta go up every year and.
No, and that's what, that's the other big caveat, is Stryker is the owner of the dump is the thing. They are right now doing two price increases a year. February and October, and they do between three and a half and seven percent increase each time. So when we lock in, if we lock in today. We're locked on that for the whole ten years.
Right, unless they go bankrupt.
If not, I'm gonna tell you this company's wrong. But, I mean, it's a good legitimate thing.
I, you know, after four years, and we've paid one point two million, and then they say, oh, sorry, we're, we're.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I mean, I think, I think you gotta look at that, yes, I, I know.
I don't know if they're a bond or anything, do they have any?
That's a question I can't answer, it's questions that we can write down when he comes in and, and can ask those questions.
If they go bankrupt, the hospitals are gonna be.
Yeah, they're gonna be on hospital strikers. Okay, so. So the other thing in this real quick, I, I, you asked the question, the other thing that's in this four hundreds. Is obviously monitors, mounts, cots, accessories, I put in there three desktop computers. We did four this year. And I need three for next year. Which is, uh, around seventy-five hundred dollars total, so about twenty-five hundred dollars apiece, that gives me the new monitors. Towers, all that stuff.
So if we don't do police, we don't do anything, you're gonna have to have the way you're talking, the two monitors.
Two monitors.
And then it's cops.
The desktops.
The, uh, one, one of the three power loads with a pot.
And one power pot on it.
Yeah, and so that comes together at about two hundred and one, two thousand dollars.
Yeah, two, I come up with, it was like two hundred and ten thousand, nine hundred and, two hundred and ten thousand and nine hundred and ten dollars. If we don't build a police program. Uh, everything I throwed in there, uh, it's so far. On wood, uh, the landlord is okay, landlord is thirteen years old. But we, there is an issue with the hydrop, hydrostatic system. Uh, replaced, it's about eighteen hundred dollars. Uh, I've not got any quotes put together at this point, so far, we've not heard or not seen. Any more problems out of it, it's still pulling, but we're gonna have to potentially maybe look at a new. Long war for.
Who does the jail?
Uh, they do, they got their own, and there, there's a. Uh, there's.
They need somebody to do it?
I think it's within their group, I don't know who it is, I think he's a retired jailer or whatever that does it, I believe.
Well, in our scene, like, everybody has a bag, like, if you could skip out of the office and go, we'll, we'll turn it around, you know, you could be there. And I've seen the sheriff out there moment, I've seen the chief deputy out there and all, and.
Well, we'll have to tell them they're gonna have. I mean, it's right there next door. Might have paid for two more, well, actually.
But you didn't pay for that. You didn't pay for this one?
Yeah.
This one was paid out of grand, so you didn't have to pay it.
Okay, well, we got a long war here at the courthouse.
We're probably tore up within.
There's cop maintenance program, so if that go away.
Yes, if you go to the lease program, yes, that's right.
So that forty-five, fifty could potentially go away.
Yeah.
Which one was that?
First page, you said that would go away, so that for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Forty-five, say forty-five.
First page is to the medical supplies, that the vending, is that actually that vending?
The, that's, I say, we, yeah, well, that counts the equipment that goes into the, into the vending machine. The vending machine, as long as we stay at the mount. Spending, then there's no charge to it.
Okay, but, but this, that will leave for this coming year, you'll have those issues.
They're right there.
They're there, okay.
Yeah, they're, 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 they're working both stations as we speak.
Okay, got it.
Uh, the other thing real quick is under the three hundreds, uh. Medical director, um, you'll see that there was an, I believe there was an increase, I'll take it down real quick here. Um. We are getting off pretty easy with the medical director, uh, most of them, most places are between five to ten thousand dollars a year. So I bumped him up ten percent. Um, and, uh, we pay him quarterly. But I think he was at twenty-eight something, I don't know.
Who goes to the medical?
Uh, Dr. Chikochi, which lives in old Susan Henderson's house down here off of, uh, West Little Church Road. Uh, but anyways, see. So he went, he was at three thousand dollars this year, he went, go on, I'm asking to go to thirty-three hundred dollars. Uh, lots of them around here, between five and upwards of ten thousand dollars for a medical director. So, um, I think that, so if you see that, that's why that, that jumped.
Okay, you have other questions?
Guard, just work on that system overtime, you said you're gonna check in two thousand?
Yeah, what I'll, I'll check with, uh, I'm gonna check with Julie on what, how she does hers, um. You know, because she does follow that program that Patty gave us, you know, but I'm gonna ask her, how is she filling up her backfill? Uh, I'm looking at some other rotations, but, uh.
When will we know?
I hope, I hope like here in the next thirty days or more. Cause we're working on it as we speak, but I know it's, you know, it's a big concern, which it is, I mean, and, and I think, but I think we go back and look. And I think this is where we anticipated we would be. Where maybe a little higher, but I think if you look at the numbers I told you in November. Numbers that Niece and Kelly drive in December were right on.
Five flights of diet, five flights of danger, so. And then, then, one week I got, and then I'm ruined, so. And the next week, I, I decided, I'd pick it up the next weekend, and they paid like, I didn't figure that out, I was totally scared. The child was very scared, anyhow, you don't have to mistake people. And that's reaching my, 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 my boss, somebody who, I don't know, I'm just.
Always follow the vibe, follow whatever it's. But I think this is a pay week, so.
Three hundred thirty two thousand one ninety five. So that puts, that. So do we pay them?
No, they made it less. I mean, it's, they made it less than that.
So we're six thousand. I did.
Sam Prickets out there.
They did, they made it less, six thousand dollars less.
Campbell's under the.
We threw him to the wall.
Yeah, it's my company, so I. Didn't want to just get business in front of the boring talking media rats.
Thirty two thousand increase in the budget.
Well, part of that is me.
I know. I genuinely didn't know the ABC had a budget until a couple of weeks ago. Calling contacted me, so.
If we go all Warren County, they don't pay any back then, any, any, they're playing commission.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Is that fifty dollars a meeting or something?
We teach that last year to kind of make it all.
Yeah, make it all uniform and then Warren County came in and said, hey, we don't pay anybody in our commission, where are we paying? Cause I guess it is a problem with.
Yeah, so there's a question, very question about that.
That's why Warren County doesn't pay anybody.
Sure, I wonder what the statute is. Yeah.
Okay, so.
Hard time. What's the hard time?
Yeah, hard time.
Hard time, I put that in there because if they. Pass the new ordinance with the permit fees and stuff, that is going to be a job. And the assessors office didn't have time, the auditors office didn't have time, you're gonna have a new auditor. And I feel like, I mean, it's, it's maybe something you won't wanna do right at the beginning. But once that ordinance, I don't know how quickly it'll get passed.
Maybe it can be put on that it will only be part-time employee if. The fees are passed, it'll be vast and ask for those fees and.
Right.
Uh, if it never gets passed, so.
Is, is, is it the council that's been driving that aspect, no, but?
The fees. Which, who does that? Need to include some of the money of staying on consulting fees.
Uh, I mean, here we got twenty thou, we, twenty twenty three spent fifty, almost fifty five thousand consulting fees. Just for playing mission. Yeah, and five hundred dollar solar panel for that doesn't cover that.
The consulting fee needs to be high for next year because of the ordinance, cause Roger's done a lot of work on it.
Yes.
So, and, and then the attorney.
Yeah, so that's what I see. Oh, I think so too, I don't think that, it's gonna be dropped from the budget, but. What I, I told Colleen is that. When we collect this money from the solar companies or whoever's having. That were being billed for their consulting fees. That ought to go back into this budget instead of the county general. It did check the.
Is that for sure?
Yeah.
I think we can.
Okay, instead, cause then it goes back to county general, then we gotta do additional appropriation to take it out of county general, put it back into.
And that's a possibility to do that. And I think, I think the, the plan should probably, there need to be. Consulting attorney that has specific knowledge of zoning laws.
Agreed.
Yeah.
No, I just want you to.
Yeah.
I did, this is, I know, I did hear from, uh, G X today. He acknowledged my email, he said they will be paid according to the letter that Brendan. And you got, I don't know what that letter is, I don't know.
I know, I think, I think I know what it is.
Okay. If you could send that to me so I could. I asked him for it, but I haven't heard back from him, it takes him a while to answer emails. But they've been billed, uh. Liberty Solar expect money any day from them, and then Crossroads, I heard from Colin, and he said that he would. Submit it for payment, get it to as quickly as possible.
On that letter. That's right here, actually finally found it. It says here that they would pay up to a hundred, reimburse up to a hundred twenty thousand dollars on anything that was incurred. With the ERA, EDP and a payment process for G X, so since we are doing that. Pay us a dime.
That's why, so that's why, upfront, that's why we want these upfront, because. We're out all this money, they're working with that.
Or it needs to be in the permit process that any. Any.
That was an fancy way for him to say no, I think.
It was sent to Ms. Hardy and Mr. Crummins.
When, what, what's the date?
The date was January sixteenth of twenty.
Twenty two.
Twenty four. They, I think it came to a meeting and they heard us talking about. The fee process, and I think that was, that was generated after they heard that. As a way to smooth the edges.
So it just, it's that thirteen thousand goodbye.
I will email this to everyone.
January seventeenth, they were sending it to all of us, all six of us.
So then that brings up what Jim, what you were saying. That we need to have somebody, an attorney that knows zoning ordinance is in renewable energies.
Yeah, okay, well, let's, let's get on, um, bank commission budget. Yeah, Campbell has any questions for us?
The, the real reason I came was just to see the process, I mean, as, as long as we're trying to, obviously get an attorney there, as long as. The county is flamed about solar, it's gonna be expensive, and if we're really trying to do, um. Full-on zoning. The thing I'm worried about is, uh, if. You know, let, let's say we suggested to pass this whole three hundred pages, the initial, you know, round that Roger presented, which I called Cadillac for good. You're gonna need three full-time people to. To administer that. And. I can't, not that I have direct experience, it's just my career. I can't imagine fees are ever gonna pay for that, I mean, I've never seen any county that has fees for stuff that are high enough to really cover that. Uh, and then, so I've been. Working pretty, uh, it's slow going, but, but really trying to pare it down. Uh, and I'm, I'm not talking about solar stuff, I'm talking about everything else, because what, what has been proposed is a. In, in my opinion, basically, just like Carmel or Zion's, but, um, but. I'm able to deal up in White County right now, we've got like six full-time people. And, you know, two surveys in, we're still trying to split off one person, one little piece, and I know. That has not been my goal, so I'm trying to pare that back, but there's no point creating something. That's gonna require staff, and that staff isn't gonna be there, but which is, now, I don't know, we have to see what we can get it. Done, and then off to the commissioners, and then obviously they, they get the vote, but my goal right now is. Get the advisory plan through the next meeting, we set that up for a vote. And then I think we ought to go back to, probably solar ordinance to, to start dealing with that. And, and then give everybody time to really digest the changes I'm trying to propose on, on the, on the rate of zoning. And, um, if it didn't. Parrot back for. For what town, county, maybe? You know, to do. And then there's the question, I said at meetings, there's a question of, well, you know, we're talking about permit fees, you know. Uh, as they've currently been, from the ten in my new house, so right now the Ag District doesn't have any fees, although. Somebody's requiring, or sorry, I don't know, fee permits. But when I built my new house, I had a single permit, I had, I had two permits accepted, I had to get that re-permitted, it was very new. And, uh, I had to get a building permit for the house, and. Current version, it would have cost me eleven permits just to build my house, I don't know, but. I personally think that's ridiculous, so I'm trying to pull it back. But, you know, you build a house, it's free, it's gonna be, one five bucks, fifty bucks, five hundred bucks, it's costing somebody, but it's never gonna be enough then. But I will say, as, as far as the budget goes, I know that's why you're here, as long as we're fighting about solar and stuff, it's gonna be expensive.
Do I have any questions?
Going on about fees, which controls the vision.
I, I don't think it's gonna be enough, but, uh, I mean, we paid fifty five thousand in twenty twenty three, I don't know what we paid this year. How old do you knew this year? Now, that's what I've got, we've, we have, um, next page. Yeah, I stated, sorry. We need to pay twenty five thousand two hundred fifty sevens for this year. But, yeah, I mean, we've got a lot of them because we didn't have money, and we said we weren't gonna appropriate any more money until. Uh, we sent out bills for. Um, and I'd say if. Uh, Gene X is not gonna pay the bill, then Roger should be told that he's not to consult with them on anything. Till they pay the bill. Yes, bill them directly by time.
I mean, if you, if I read the letter correctly, that's. That's the way I interpreted that letter.
And how much did you bill them for?
Thirteen thousand seventy dollars maybe? That's just solar fees, that's not training fees, cause we had, we had a lot of the training fees to. But yes, thirteen thousand so.
Uh, I assume that's gonna have to be, missionaries are gonna have to tell them not to do that, but. Messengers need to know we're not gonna budget any more money. Till they pay.
I mean, we've always said that, I mean, that's, they wanna be here, but about enough, they will pay it, they've got big money backing them, so.
Okay, do you have anything else, anybody? The other day, tonight, and September, we're just talking with all the partners, we've been, it's, I've been, and then it makes that. Yeah.
The schedule. This Jimmy. It's gonna get to be working.
So, and what we build, Franger?
I'll relate from Kim.
Yeah.
Her budget, and she, they have family, they have socials there, uh. I will send that information when I build to you.
Do we have, um, I, I, obviously, I haven't looked at this. Do we have what the budget is for, for the state funding? Okay, is that in here, or do you have that?
And that doesn't have to be, uh, submitted actually, go to number first.
Okay.
So, um, I have just a simplified version, and then, um, there, uh, spreadsheet, so then for everybody.
It is, yes.
I know, like, you know, that'd be certain, like, I better know the friends. Yeah, shit, I'll just do the timing, I can only put in gateway. The forty eight thousand. It was the oldest amount. And then.
You all see.
Jenny and I were talking earlier today.
But forty eight thousand goes away, right? You don't get that.
But it's included, I mean, some of the same catalyst. Yeah, I think I could get all this, that's on the budget for next year.
Did we give one for Dale?
Yeah, so that forty eight thousand was rolled into that, um, grant. So, yeah, there's a, there's a simplified version, and then there's that spreadsheet, I did email that spreadsheet to you, um, earlier today, so that way if you wanted to look at it. Our minds have seized, I'm so, they said a little difficult.
Hey, everyone, start.
So, um. Start with the eleven fifty nine, um.
Okay.
So I know that we've agreed on those, um, just maintaining our budget, I just wanted to make note that I did add additional for insurance. Um, just because our rates are going up, so, um. Would be like e- equipment insurance, and then.
Liability.
What is that?
Was it the liability?
Well, uh, yeah, the liability insurance, yes. So, um, I just raised it up just a little, just to try to compensate for those increases. Um, for the equipment insurance, we do need to, um, do an inventory and readjust those, um. Rates on that, um. And then also for internet, we did, we did not have anything coming out of the eleven fifty nine. But what had happened whenever we turned the telephone off, because we went with the county. We were on a package deal with phone. We were on a package deal with phone and internet. Taking the phone off, and our internet rates have gone up. So, um, I've just added that a thousand dollars to that. And then everything else remained the same.
So what about the rent? I saw that that was coming up. Commissioner do anything?
They heard that yesterday.
So they approved it, so it won't be going out to. The building where the ambulance might be going in, I would recommend, so you're gonna be here for the next five years.
Years, there is a six-month exit clause, if we need.
Six.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, pay up.
And Doctor Hessel is okay, because I know he wasn't happy either.
He wants centrally located, um, but I think with everything, it's probably just safe right now.
Okay.
You know, it's hard here, we're trying to do, show progress within our office, and then, um, like tomorrow, or Friday, we're having the Women's Resource Center come. We're trying to put in power for them at at our office, well, then now we're wound up and moved. You know, and then same with the generator, you know, we're trying to get a generator put in. And then it's like, I feel like we're constantly battling something. Um, so I really would like for myself, I'd love to just get our heat planted, um, and so show some progress. We do have a need, it's there, but, um, there's just. We like to hold the chat.
And so the rent staying the same for the next five years?
Yes, we're gonna stay on the same.
Maybe that's a good thing that I'm hearing, if you want.
I agree.
Okay. They may have any question, I mean, it's basically everything's. Like, uh, most. Now, unlike the coroner, her, the budget is two hundred and seventy dollars more this year. A quarter cut is.
Oh.
He's the only one that the cut is, I just see, and I, when I first, I saw that twenty-three hundred Brent sees, I thought, oh, maybe.
No, no, no.
Okay, now, or two hundred and seventy dollars, you're all the, with the new money.
That is the new money. Yes, yeah, that is what we, um, we have plans for, you know, we, um. We're really pushing for that mobile integrated health. Um, it is a global process, and there's many things that we shared with you guys that. We may have to redirect that, so.
So this, this, the page fifty, that money will come out of the, um, Health Department. Tax collection, so, okay, but this, the from the state. I don't know, they're gonna pay you once, I mean, a month, or how they're gonna pay you.
The way I understand it, it comes Jan- January.
So now page fifty-one, though, that. That money is, we will not give that forty-eight thousand one hundred eleven, that's included in this. So the. You'll see like Social Security. That was budgeted on forty-eight thousand is on this for the states. Uh, the. Grant Coordinator Environmental Law and, uh. All right, that's all, it's all here doing.
Yeah, that's the second one, sorry.
Okay, so forty-eight is this.
Yes.
Yes, forty-eight, and that's because we'll no longer get that forty-eight thousand dollar check, state. But now, yeah. They spread the twenty-five thousand, so they're gonna get.
It's the same.
Your staff. Or we did.
Yeah, we have. We actually have a grant right now that we can possibly hire part-time attorneys. We'll look into that at some point. That's just capital outlay, that's just an option that we have set aside ten percent, and we just went ahead and set aside ten percent. Um, if it comes down to, if you don't use it, it just rolls over. There is no plans at at first, that goes.
I just want you to be able to get a little bit.
I know, I'm happy to share, I'm gonna fill it, babe, we're not going to McDonald's.
What I don't see is.
Tell me what that joke is, you better.
You know, if you can't laugh, then, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
But this same budget of, what about increases for salaries?
So, so we did not put that in there because we asked to maintain, so we thought, well, we didn't wanna. Tip the boat, so if you guys came to everybody, we, we don't leave us out.
I just wanted to say that.
Yeah. Yeah, that.
So you didn't build in the end of this three hundred and thirty-five thousand.
We did, so we did, but not for, um. A cost of living raise, what we did is a stipend for the additional, um, duties that our staff will incur. So with that stipend, that if this money goes away, the stipend goes away. Um, and it's a stipend, we still like to do it as a, um, get on the regular payroll, in case someone were to leave, we don't want to pay out early, pay out late. Just to stipend, so this personnel stipend is a raise.
To just be away for their additional.
Yes, for the additional duties, not as a cost of living raise, yeah.
What's the PHM?
Public Health Systems.
Okay.
And then like the lead risk catcher, that's gonna be a contract position, um, not for, that we will hire, um, someone from Montgomery County, worth and likely. Um, that's something that the state is taking away, um, as far as a lead risk catcher, they're no longer going to offer that. And we will be required to have that on staff.
I'm sorry.
The lead risk catcher, they're the environmental services. That nine thousand dollars, that is a requirement that we won't have to have. We're just on our contract. We, um.
Oh, okay. Then. Oh, is. There any additional employees with the state money, so it's just your guys for all.
Just, um, I do feel like we probably, um, are stacking probably a little low, um. But then with our new findings, it's like, what do we do? You know, we have so many needs in our county, it's, you know, it's it's hard to play it all, so.
What do you plan to to renovate with the bill?
So that was just ten percent, we could just set ten percent aside for capital outlay, but there are no plans to do any renovations. We can just roll that over if we need to later. Or. Yeah, so we just wanted that as a set aside. And with any of these, we can do that, we can appropriate it and, um, get a revision, um, that's, that's not a problem. If we find it at all the time.
How much have you paid out of here today in, um, attorney fees, I know that was a commission last year, not having that we updated.
So right now, we're doing okay with the attorney fees, um. It's, it's currently at ten thousand, and and we're doing okay, it's okay.
And your, your accounting's working for that?
Yeah. Can we use, yeah.
Yeah. And if I have any other questions? Okay, anything else?
No, I think that's pretty.
The longer it's right down here.
Okay, that's okay.
Okay.
Good to meet you, I'm good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
So, you do, I mean, um. Want to discuss anything?
Sure, yes, yes, we do.
Yeah, that's the night you will plan to take a vote. Uh, I, well. Kelly sent. An email out about two things, I did talk to, uh, Spencer Derry today. Uh, he is going to have, he does not know if. That. The law that he sent out. He doesn't read it specifically that. And I don't know where you saw that, that. Were prepared the resolution, the resolution does not have anywhere on there who prepared it, you don't know who prepared it. But he is going to ask the Senate attorneys to look that over, and he's gonna call me back and let me know what they tell him. He is also going to, um. Um, work on some legislation in the Senate that. Any solar. And he wants more ideas from us, but I told him like. For any tax abatements or ERA, he doesn't like the wording on the ERA about. The farmland, and he says that's, that's gotta change, it's wrong. Uh, I also told him that I would like to see, let the legis- legislation be that. Uh, before you can vote on ERA resolutions or tax abatements. That the county has to have a reuse agreement in effect. Has to have a decommissioning in effect, has to have a drainage plan in effect before we can counsel and even vote on it, and we. Said he will work on that, any other ideas, he said, we can contact him, or he said, you can tell me your ideas, and. I have his cell phone to call him, and, um. Uh, he will work on anything we want in legislation, because he said he's, he hears a lot of things about his solar. That, uh, he he doesn't like.
Yeah, I'm, can we just, can we discuss this?
Yeah, because this is, yeah, or it's.
I was sure about a recent Indiana Supreme Court decision indicating that, uh. Utilities companies essentially don't have to obey local zoning laws. I I didn't bring, it's in my phone, I will have to send it to you, it was, uh. Uh, that the Indiana Regulatory Commission essentially has oversight over public utilities. And this is a concern, if public utility purchases. These particular solar farm. Whether that gives them, you know, domain, and they can essentially ignore. Local land and zoning, I I don't know, it it's a really. Gray area now, as far as I'm concerned. With that Supreme Court, Indiana Supreme Court decision.
Yeah, I I mean, Spencer told me, like, on the farm ground, he said, I can see this. Bad ground that you can't, can, that, that's all right for solar, but.
That's not working, but.
But, yeah, that's exactly right, that's why I told him, and. Uh, said, you know, there's any way we can, uh. Well, I I just told him, I I would like to rescind it, and if, so he will have his attorneys look into it. But I told him, I mean, I said, we got a six-inch binder of all reasons why we could be sued if we did rescind it, so. So he's gonna. Do that today.
Well, when we met with Roger yesterday, we talked about an awful lot of things. In regards to solar and ordinances, period. And one thing that. We discussed is. The soil needs to stay on the farm. It should not ever be removed, it's not theirs to remove. Um, and I don't know if that's something that. Needs to be in the ordinance, I think it needs to be in the ordinance, um, I think Roger definitely felt like it needed to be in the ordinance. And he. He suggested to us that we need to re-up that moratorium, because he said it's gonna take the rest of this year to get everything lined out. For, uh, new revision of the ordinance, and then it's gonna take probably a good quarter to have a year next year, or better to get it. Written, approved, and in place, he said, if you don't do this, redo the ordinance prior to that moratorium ending, and he said, you're not gonna live it up. He said it opens the floodgates. Because there will be nothing in place, no changes. To protect anybody.
And I, and I'm fine with, let's, let's get our budget out of the way, but maybe even November. Is, I have a resolution drafted to.
That's what I see, that's it. I don't have the meeting.
And and do it for. Till December of twenty twenty-six, I'm, I'm okay with doing, that gives you, because you can always change the resolution.
Yes.
Give plenty of time to get the ordinance written, and let's get the. Rules in there that everyone can live with and be happy about.
I I agree, another thing that we talked about was carbon sequestration. Roger would like to speak to an attorney that has knowledge of it. Because he said, I do not know what the federal rules are, or the state rules, and make any type of suggestions to anybody. And, um, one person that came to mind, and Jim, you agree, was, um, Janson Law Firm out of. Indianapolis, Rihanna Sherover is very knowledgeable on ordinances, zoning, and renewable energy. And, um, I think. It would pay to give her a bump, and Roger just wanted our commission, commissioners' permission to be able to speak to her. In regards to that, so we know where we stand.
Well, um, I would be open to a, any. Uh, motion to give Roger the authority that we will pay the bill, but I didn't, the commissioners approve it.
Uh, and one of my justifications, I don't think we can use the, whether it's a friends of Fountain County.
Attorney.
But I think it'd be conflict of interest if we use that attorney, so we need to. Have a. Another.
And I'm fine with that, so you want to.
I made the motion to allow Roger to speak to, um. Rihanna Sherover, Janson Law Firm, and that we. Basically pay.
Actually.
Can we?
Don't we, don't. I mean, we can, I I don't think we need the commissioners, because we got money in our budget.
And to be paid out of the county council.
Yeah, budget, okay, okay, all those are favored.
Aye.
Okay, six oh, and, um. You want to contact Roger?
Yes, I just wanted to get him the information.
Yeah, we'll hand out of our budget to. To, uh, talk to them and. I'll just.
I think we just need to try and get ahead of the game a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, uh. I guess we can talk about all the council budget too for next year.
Eighteen.
Yeah, interesting, and and, you know, though. We have a lot of money in the. Forty-four hundreds. Forty-four thousand accounts, just because. We took those out of the commissioner's budget, so that we have control, um, and I, you know, I. We we need to take a serious look at that for next year, because, I mean, we're gonna have at least. There's, there'll be two new commissioners next year, um. So, um. We probably should give them the benefit of the doubt, put the money in there. Provided that new commissioners talk with the council and discuss things, and if they don't. Do the right thing by discussing, then the next year, the council should pay the back and put it back in the council, um. That, and that's my opinion, uh, you guys. Okay, we can talk about it when we do our final work, too, uh. I am a little concerned about commissioners' budget, because Brenda has stated she is not. I am a little concerned about commissioner's budget because Brenda has stated she is not gonna come to us and talk to us about. Budget. Um, so um. I, I.
She's wanted that.
Well, not all of it.
I think that.
Yeah, I'll, we have, we have, because then. Put some things in there. So I, I think um, probably um. We need to. Let's, my suggestion is that we have Erin come in and talk to us and. We also invite the three other candidates who are running for and they can give us ideas. Uh, if you wanna get a copy of what the commissioner's budget is for next year, look that over and um. We'll set up maybe the next meeting hearings and you can. Give us my ideas, but.
So do you wanna take the forty four hundreds out?
Yeah. Well.
I think we should keep maybe half like that because it's also nice for someone coming here. And then we can say, we'll pay it out of ours and I don't have to wait another week or two, three weeks to go back to the commissioners. Sometimes people need to do something.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't think we should take it all out.
No, no, you, you are exactly right. Um, we can. Look at.
Okay.
Putting some of this back into commissioners for them here and leave some in ours and um. Remember, I think we need to give up, yes.
They got to come into the circle trust.
Yes, yeah, that's right. Gotta earn our trust back to, to do this, so I will reach out to um. Uh, KW and Kathy and.
I, I'm getting it through.
Okay, it's like three, at the September ninth, we'll work you guys in and.
Is that, is that what I told you? Yeah, nine forty five, right? Yeah, nine, nine forty five.
Forty five, okay. I will let Erin know and I will let the others and.
I just have no, I have no contact information for the other.
Uh, I have KW's and I, I will, I will find Kathy, so.
So you'll take care of that?
Yes, I'll take care of those, buying Erin, K W and Kathy. Uh, whatever. Uh, the four of them can give us their thoughts on the commissioner's budget. What their ideas are for, for example, on budget for mid corner building, budget for UIGA, um. What are your ideas on that? Okay.
Did, when you, in your discussion with um, Rock and. Um. In the commissioners. Uh, what happened, but this, in the, in. In the end, saying about the relationship wasn't.
No.
You know, it was just.
Yeah, he was saying, this was the, yeah.
No, but I mean. Uh, you know, he just left the word.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, you left it.
You left it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what you advised, you know, what do you think, Erin, or you know, something like that, but. We didn't, um, yeah, he didn't say anything.
Just counsel if anything.
For what?
Consulting.
Consulting fees, counsel.
Uh, actually, yes, because, yeah, we can't go over the six fifty six since that's what we advertised, but if we're gonna cut. Some of those.
But you're gonna add to the.
We're gonna add, well, we might, we might take not adding much to the commissioner.
The reason why I'm in there is because um. I made a separate line item for that. Uh, what's that twenty two thousand you gave to the clerk? Out of your budget, I wanted, wanted it to be specific in state, case state board if it counts, looked at it. So that they know that's what it was for, so, and that's why it's coming up.
Yeah, when we go through this page book page, we can. Yeah, if it say cap- capital outlay to uh, a hundred thousand, give. Commissioner seventy five thousand, put twenty five thousand in the consultant fee.
Yeah, yeah.
We also, let's, let's say the commissioner is hiring new attorney. Do we still need to have a council attorney? And I don't need, I don't need an answer, that's just a question.
That's a good question, yes, I, I, um. You know, we want to start a phone attorney because we didn't get answers from. And I, you know, I don't.
Just wait and see, I suppose.
Yeah, well, after we can see and. I'd say you need to budget it.
Yeah.
Because you won't know until January second. Who the council or county, commissioner, county. Counting the attorney is gonna be, uh, I, at the special joint night meetings just because. I mean, we had a two thousand, we've had a lot of night meetings that Collins had to be to be at and the commissioners. And I heard that, I know two of the candidates that said. They want to go to one day meeting, one night meeting. I don't know about the other two.
What is it? Security, security comes out of those and also where was that at?
No, that's just to pay the. Uh, we might need to look at security more money for. Stuff we didn't have tonight, but. We didn't get it all up yet. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So we might ask them about our night meeting in September.
Yeah, that might, I might have dropped the ball on that, I mean. I don't know.
And I, I say we have a meeting here in September, then that meeting, meeting we only had.
Yeah, I think.
Four people from the public team, so I don't, and that. Night meeting September is gonna be more boring than this one, because I have to go through every page and start. We got excited at that meeting, what are we gonna do across the board? Races or we're going to do each.
I don't know how you guys feel, but. We've outsourced things in different departments, but yet we still have part time. Is the part time really needed or is the outsource really needed or is that someplace that we need to look at?
Well, you know, I, and I wasn't here, I apologize, I wasn't at the August twelfth meeting, so I don't know. I mean, I. One, I think of the treasurer's office and we've cut the. Part time for the treasurer because we went to having the outsourced the um.
Which I think they like that and I think it's worked out well.
But I, I would also, I, I. Will need to talk to the incoming new treasurer, what I'd like to see is. Fire go in with those tax statements about the era ambulance, I think that needs to go to.
Yes.
The Warren County says that.
Yes.
There with your tax statements, um. Uh, you know, so part time is to raise to six hundred and twenty five thousand for next year, um. So, you know, I don't, you know, I know they're busy. Well, vacation if you have, and when you go to conference, you're, when there's only two.
I think she's cut that because didn't she have more than one in there? Or more?
Uh, well, there used to be.
That's what I was.
There was three deputies, there was three deputies in the.
Yeah.
Or none, but I think we kept that.
She raised it for this year, but um.
Right, it's two, part time.
Treasury, I have a treasure.
So there's a treasurer that she has a first deputy and then she has a part time.
Right, which part time I think just helps.
She actually has two part time people that come in.
Okay.
She, she told us the reason she up to part time was. Because Susan is leaving and maybe first she's gonna need to go to a lot of additional training. A new one, and it's gonna have to learn a lot, but they may need that extra person, she's gonna go on a lot. That's what Susan told us, that's why I, that's what I really know.
Okay.
And she could reduce her bank fees.
Yeah.
Postage to seven. Contractual services to twenty five hundred, yes, she can reduce a lot of things.
Where's that? Oh, okay, I don't have.
So she. She reduced postage to seven thousand.
Okay.
And could remain the same tax outsourcing, the same contractual services to twenty five hundred.
Twenty five hundred.
Twenty three.
Oh, no, I did, yeah, she did say twenty three to twenty five, yeah, I didn't change that.
So it's twenty five eighty?
It's just twenty five hundred.
Twenty five hundred, okay. Oh, it's got to.
Definitely.
And then. Travel and mileage, she actually increased to three thousand because she thought about the new treasurer needing to go to a lot of training.
Yeah, but. Some of that can be taken out of that. County officials.
Exactly, that would be.
Yeah.
And bank fees, sixty five hundred.
Fifty five hundred.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't pay Indian twenty twenty three.
Yeah, we started out last year.
Started last year, okay.
Then it was, so just, it was. Gonna be higher when they had higher balances because the FDIC and chances paid on the balance. But because we're keeping so much in the trust Indiana, then that reduces the fee significantly.
Right, yeah, so, okay.
Yeah, she changed so, and she was here.
Okay. Tom, I think you're, you are, these other.
That, that was one of the most.
Okay.
Changed a little, but.
Well, we'll have to look at. Uh, I need to look at the uh, public safety fee, what we ended the year, what we have. Could come out for the rest of the year and what. We anticipate income to be next year because we can't budget more than what that is fun's gonna happen, same way with the um. Altitude, the public safety and uh.
See.
Cedar, yes, so we'll have to look at that. And last year, I know we had to move some funds. Out of Cedar, public safety and put them in county general because.
Mm-hmm.
Costs went up and we. And I just got to figure what we're gonna get next year, but I don't know that.
That's an estimate.
Estimates, yes, we won't know that. Now, it changed ten times, but I don't know if it'll be the, that's. Close to what we got this year or not, so certified shares and. Public safety and economic development, that doesn't look like it's. What we got this year, it's less to me.
Mm-hmm.
So, and I, and you know, I'm also concerned about. Kind of general money because of. It's, I just read, I think Indiana's unemployment rate has gone up four months in a row and that means our income is gonna be. Last and our special lift and will be. Quite shifting on us, even though we got a healthy company in there, but.
But next year's a new year.
Yeah, right.
With the, with the potential new.
Well, we're gonna.
There will be a, yeah, sure, but uh, yeah, so, you know, I don't know, like that. Our money situation. Don't look like for next year. Okay.
You were asking, somebody was asking about how it works with lucrative positions.
Yes.
Okay, here's what it says, article two, section nine. No person holding a lucrative office or appointment under the United States or under the state is eligible to a state. In the general assembly and no person may hold. More than one lucrative office at the same time, except as expressly. Permitted in this constitution.
And that's why Warren County does not pay any. Body for their.
Positional, any.
Not any board, and it's a long way.
This address set to, I know, and yeah, so.
And that's in the state constitution.
Yeah, well, and um. Yeah, I mean, that's.
And candidate.
They're trying to use a court, I mean, nothing's been filed in a court that I know of, I mean. We, we, we know what it says, but.
That, that was one of the reasons why I retired off the planning commission when I was planning commission chairman. Because I was also uh, so dramatic a school board. So.
But I know rules change, I mean, when I was, Chief Parker Jane Rice was trustee in Richland Township. They made her state board counsels, you, you can't, she wasn't elected, but she was appointed deputy clerk. They said, well, you can't be township trustee, she had to resign this, but now I think. You can, I think, so, you know.
Yeah, I, I was getting, receiving any compensation, I, I still. You know, retire off the planning commission, so there wouldn't be any.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's.
Now, if you want more clarification. Darren, whatever his name over there in Warren County, he used to be on the council.
Peter Ball, Peter Ball?
Peter Ball, yeah.
Ball.
He has an official letter from Todd Rakita about it. Because he's not on the council anymore, but he's the veteran services officer. And when someone left the council this year. I think it was the council. They wanted him to.
Fill in.
Fill in, and he said, I don't think I can do that, so they had to contact Rakita about it, so he has a, they have a letter.
And that letter says he couldn't.
Yeah, I think it does say that he can do it, and there was like some stipulation reason why he couldn't do it, but.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it, it's changed because like I said. Jane hadn't resigned, but then now I told you can be a. Deputy in one of the offices and still be a button official, like in a township or city.
Mm-hmm.
Council, so, you know. You gotta get an attorney that's ever able to give you an opinion.
Oh, there's so many interpretations.
I know, yeah. That's what I told Spencer today, I said, we can ask four attorneys a question about. Some of the paperwork we have and we get four different handlers.
Mm-hmm.
And it's.
And you could do the same thing with more different judges.
Yes.
Not true.
Right.
And surveyors.
Yeah. That's right. It'd be fun, yeah. If you had something.
No, I just said I had to resign off that extension board. And they said, well, I said, it was a conflict of interest, he said, you know, sometime, I'll be a chairman. Sometime when you're in a position like we are. And there are other positions that, you know. Looked after by people like us, he said, you know, you just do it.
Yeah, you just avoid the conflict that you used to.
But. There were problems, who's going back yet? No, I don't have anything done.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, so we will not adjourn, we will recess until. Nine AM on September ninth and ten, your budget hearing.
And there's not gonna be any other meeting in September ninth, executive lines about.
Not that I know of, I mean, that we gave Taylor some things to check on and I haven't heard anything from him. About that, so.
I'll tell you what, after, I just, we're done.
We're recessed.
I'll reset, we have another. Uh, I just, after going through those invoices and a couple of things I saw. I just questioned. Couple of. Would have. We, even though I read what I read today. And what you said about the senators, I don't know if we got a good dog in this, I don't know, guys. I really gotta listen. But, you know, I wanna get into them. So I'll, and I'll show you the dinner, what I'm. I can show you in time.
Yeah, I, yeah.
We're, we're. I don't believe it.
Turning it.
I mean, I'm just gonna. And the whole business. I didn't have all your shoulders.
He can't tell you shit without, you know, he's not gonna have.
So.
I think. That they've.
Okay.
I think in that temporary one, what was, that's like temporary, what was the, the description?
Now, that's what I, I just thought. But he has not issued a one two now.
Because it's waiting on stuff.
It's set to back.
Waiting.
Everything now, that's the give you.
Yeah.
Oh, I hope he waits until they pay us.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Did you? Only on.
Yeah, yeah.
Did you look up or, you know, who to ask on? Who had control over benefits, vacation time, how?
No, I did not, um. I, I know it's. I, I know it's. Sticky situation, but I know Newton County had a fight with their commissioners, because they, they, they read it that. They have, they have the power to do the health insurance and the council went around the commissioners.